I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of January 18th, 2018, to order at 6 o'clock PM, and ask Clerk Simmsky for roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We have open forum. Again, if anybody's here to talk about an item that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing none, I'll close open forum and move on to reports. I'm reporting that Citizen of the Year Award nominations will be posted on the Village and Westmont Chamber website. There, every year, we name a Citizen of the Year, as well as various other awards that other community organizations give. I don't know what the Rotary does one, the Chamber, so there's a lot of the Westmont Special Events, so there's, it's a great evening to honor those who donated their time. Our Sister City Program, we're planning our 2018 schedule, which will, this year, emphasize economic development, and there'll be a trip to Taiwan that will, to our sister city, Shinchu, and we're planning to visit, and they're planning to come back here in July, so we're going to try to stress the economic component to that trip. So, I know Larry will be joining, Larry Forsberg, and probably Larry McIntyre, along with some residents and some people in the community who are interested. So, they've invited us, and we're looking forward to it. And that's all I have. So, I'll move on over here to Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is March 15th, right here, and I also just wanted to recap our 2017 Public Works press release, which is on the website. If you want to go there, you can review all the items that we've been working on. And lastly, I just want to thank the Police Department. I received a complaint from a few residents on Black Hawk about some speeders, and literally the next day, they had enforcement out there in the trailer, and the residents called and emailed, thanked the village very much, and the chief for making it happen really quick. So, it's good to see that. They were surprised that the village cared and took care of it pretty quick. So, all the families, we heard about seven or eight families on there that were grateful. So, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be the 1st of February at 4:30 in this room. We now meet the very first Thursday board meeting of every month, so please come out and join us for that if you're interested. Also, Westmont Special Events is moving forward with a St. Patty's Day local pub tour. Tentative date right now is March 10th. That's a Saturday. Full details will be coming soon. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things this evening. This past Tuesday, we had a Westmont First meeting, and it was a very special meeting for us in that it had a seniors' focus. We were able to get in the same room representatives from Maze Lake, Brea, Burgess Square, Aspired Living, the Chamber Senior Group, the Police Department Senior Resource Officer, and a Westmont Home Healthcare Business. And we had quite a meeting in that they were able to share ideas and talk about the senior care in Westmont here. And it's very educational for me, as I get older, but, you know, the seniors in the community and the senior services that are provided here, the senior services are really first-class, if you listen to all the accomplishments of this group. And then, when you think about the issues that they face, it's a growing problem, and that's really the, one of the takeaways from the meeting is Maze Lake is bursting at the seams with affordable housing. Affordable housing is going to be... Affordable housing for seniors is going to be harder and harder to find.
People are going to think you swore now because of...
I've been believed before.
They usually wait for Trustee Barry to go ahead.
This time, it wasn't Jim. All right. But anyway, it was a great, it was a great meeting, and I'm glad that we were able to do that at Westmont First. Every quarter, we're going to have a different focus group, and we hope to do the same thing. And from that, you know, what I emphasized to these organizations, that the Village Government here, the trustees and the mayor are supportive of the work that they do here, and we recognize, because they were coming in here the last few meetings and talking about all the great things that were going on in their businesses, and it was really nice to, you know, draw attention to them. So, that was a good night for us. And then, secondly, I had my first meeting with the Environmental Improvement Commission last Monday, Tuesday? Monday. Last Monday, and John Yader, our forester, kind of led that, and they gave me the education of a lifetime. Those folks are so tuned in to the environment here in the community and really the globe, and it was a very good meeting. It was a lengthy meeting, and I have a lot to learn. And then, I promised those people for the efforts that they make in this community that I'll bring their issues to all of us here, as their representative here on the board. And the first thing that I would like to draw attention to is really the need to emphasize the support for the Richmond Gardens project over there, both publicly and establish the buzz for that, and then financially as well, to make sure that that project goes, you know, in a timely manner. It's a great project, and it's environmentally all the way around, and it's very passionate to that group and John and, as well as Jill, but it's going to be a great educational project here in the village. And then, lastly, there is still time to, according to my notes here, to turn in your failed holiday lights at the fire station and the library. And they were happy to report at the library that people hadn't put a bunch of their rubbish or their old TVs in those collection baskets. All right. That is all, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure as a lot of people have noticed, the excitement over Johnny Blitzes is open in downtown, and I know Larry and Johnny is here tonight. We have an exciting ribbon cutting coming up next Thursday, a week from tonight, January 25th. Larry, do you want to come up? And Johnny, tell us, tell us what's going to happen and exciting things, and what the burger's going to be that night and so forth?
We will be having a ribbon cutting next Thursday, the 25th. It's at 6:00 to 7:00 PM. The actual ribbon cutting will be at 6:30, and we encourage everyone to come out, especially if you've never been to Johnny Blitzes. And we have John with us here tonight to tell us a little bit more.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Larry. Thank you so much for inviting me and giving me a couple of minutes to discuss Johnny's Blitz. We're open. We've been open for two months. Some of you have been there. Some of you have not been there. I'd like to invite everyone that's been there and not been there to please come in for the ribbon cutting and see what we got there. As promised, we created something special downtown Westmont. I like to brag about our burger, but I'll let you brag about it. I like to brag about our craft beers, too. So, I'd love to see you there. I'd love to see you like Johnny's Blitz on Facebook and Instagram, or out there blitzing the advertisement, if you will, to try to drum up some business and keep us going strong. We can't wait for a good day to open the doors and let the music go out and bring the outside in and the inside out. We also have on the menu, which is not, literally, it's written on the menu, a vegan burger, which is the Impossible Burger, which some people rave about it. It tastes like meat, it feels like meat, but it's still not meat. So, we encourage you to come in. I thank you so much for your support, from my heart. I encourage you and ask you for your continued support. And, Mr. Mayor, you're welcome to come in. I look forward to seeing you there, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Beautiful remile. It's beautiful. It really is. It fits in nice downtown, and we already heard a testimony about that burger, and Jill says it's really good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Johnny. And we'll see you next Thursday. Yeah, it's, you know, so many of us have been wanting so much for downtown, and we hear that all the time. Wouldn't it be great to have a burger joint down here? So, we really encourage the residents to go visit Johnny and tell their friends in surrounding communities, and let's bring those people downtown Westmont. So, hopefully, that continues, and once our cruising nights kicks off, you'll be hiring more staff, I'm sure of it. So, as long as we're all getting hungry, I will want everyone to mark their calendars for the Second Annual Westmont Restaurant Week, and this is scheduled for March 2nd through March 11th. A list of the participating restaurants will be published in early February. And that is all I have today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things. There was a fire this morning at the Jewel Asco on Ogden and Cass. It was quickly contained by our Westmont Fire Department. Jewel is working to make repairs and is hoping to be ready to open the weekend. I want to thank everyone involved for the quick response and keeping everything, keeping everything status quo. Secondly, there is a Citizens' Fire Academy class starting April 5th, and it's going through May 10th. Check it out on the website, westmont.illinois.gov. There's information on how you can sign up. Again, too, I also want to remind everybody to help the fire department and the village by keeping your fire hydrants clear of snow. We've been kind of in a little bit of a snow drought, but it goes without saying, there's always, always take the time to make sure that our fire department, if it's needed, can get to the fire department. And keeping on the snow theme, I want to thank our Public Works Department for the great job they did on our streets. I have heard a lot of compliments about, you can tell when you get into the Village of Westmont's jurisdiction, because our, our streets are plowed, salted, so thank you again. And then, lastly, we have a, my public, my first Public Safety Committee Chair meeting will be February 15th at 4:30, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Trustee Addington.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Our committee meeting this evening was Community Development, and this was my first time as chairing that committee, which is an exciting committee because of a lot of the things that they're doing. We'll report, first of all, to everyone that they kind of give us a recap of last year, and there were a lot of permits that were drawn, a lot of increased values, but the amount of property values increases between single-family homes and commercial was about $35 million, and about $1,700,000 in fees that were paid last year into the Building Department. So, that's, that's very significant. We are, and we're very pleased with that. We continue to grow. We continue to have, I think, new business come in. I think Jewel recommended, what was it, 25, 35 new businesses that came into town last year. So, there are a lot of positives there, and we will continue to work. Their goal, as they move forward, and of course, we're always looking for input from the community, is to make the processes, whether it's something to do with, like we did last year, with making the sign ordinance situation easier and more streamlined. We want to do the same thing with a lot of the other items that the Building Department works with with regard to drawing permits and fees, and, and they're going to be working on that. Again, when you come in, make it easy, make it a little more understandable, streamline it a little bit, and that just makes it easier for the, for the residents and the developers who want to come into Westmont. So, that's, that's their goal, and we applaud them for that, and we'll just keep reporting back. Our next meeting will be in April, and we'll see what happens in between. The other thing is, last night, the mayor and Steve May and I attended the annual Legislative Dinner for DuPage Mayors and Managers, and Tuesday, next Tuesday morning will be the next meeting of the Legislative Committee for DuPage Mayors and Managers. They gave time last night for several, there were about 15 of our local DuPage County legislators in attendance, and there's two, there's a couple of significant things that need to be mentioned. The first one is with the folks that represent us in Springfield, from DuPage County, to a person. They all came out of municipal government. They understand villages and towns. They support the villages and towns. When we talk about some of our agendas and things, you know, we're preaching to the choir, and, and we have their support. I think probably the two most significant things that came out of last night was, it's an election year for them. They don't see any real legislation happening until after the November election. That's number one. Number two, there will be a budget passed, because none of them want to go into the election, telling the voters that there is no budget at the state level, how that budget looks, what kind of cuts there will be, you know, how that affects us as municipalities. Nobody knows yet, but they're saying, they're saying that there's going to be a budget because they're, they're going to do it. And, and that's basically, I think, the, the things that they talked about last night. So, they go back into session the end of the month, and there'll be more information as we get it. And that's it.
And Trustee Addington serves on that committee, and the reason why it's important is that with the potential property tax freeze or holding back some of our money, I think it's very important that Trustee Addington keeps us current on those issues. And I neglected Clerk Simmsky, so I'm going to go back and allow her an opportunity, if she can stay awake.
Ah, gee.
I feel sorry for Shifu back from Hawaii. I flew back from Hawaii overnight, so I haven't had any sleep.
Well, you have an excuse. That's okay.
Harold feels real sorry.
I landed, I came in at 5:30, so, and then I came right to the village, so.
Well, more importantly, you got to experience the missile threat to Hawaii.
Yes, I did.
Oh, geez.
Yes. It was kind of frightening at the moment. You're just like, really? Missile's coming? What should we do? We have 15 minutes to decide. Okay, anyway, a reminder that our village offices will be closed on February 19th for President's Day. Secondly, Jim, you let me down. The Lions will be holding their reverse raffle.
He's the chair. He should have mentioned.
It was under you.
I know.
The reverse raffle on Friday, February 9th, and there are a bunch of Lions here that can sell you tickets. Me, Jim, the mayor, Larry Forsberg.
We'll be more than happy to sell a ticket.
Anyway, if you have tickets to sell. So far, I don't have any. But, anyway, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on the agenda, items to remove from the consent agenda. Any trustees see an item?
I just have a question, and I leave this to the attorney. If there's an item that I need to recuse myself from, should I take that item off now or just recuse myself from the whole vote?
Probably best to have that removed from the consent agenda and have it voted on separately, so your recusal doesn't impact the other items.
Okay. And that would be Item D2, under purchase orders.
All of them, or?
No, just I, D.
Oh, okay.
Right. Did I say that?
And D?
Oh, D. I said, what do you, okay. Is mine working? Okay.
You know, our ordinance says, at the request of a trustee or the mayor, it will get moved automatically, so.
Okay. We will withdraw that from, and we'll address that after we vote for the consent agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other item? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Yes.
Okay. First, on the consent agenda, our Village Board meeting minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held January 4, 2018. It's followed by the December financial report. Board to consider motion to accept the financial report submitted for the month of December 2017. We have finance ordinance number 18 and the aggregate amount of $1,470,704.52, followed by purchase orders. First purchase order is Curry Motors, the amount of $26,456. That's a, an insured replacement of one of the patrol vehicles. The second purchase order was removed. So, now the second purchase order is Engineering Solutions Team at $74,000. I'm not equipped enough to do the math in my head, so I don't know what the totals are, but that concludes the consent agenda.
Do you want it?
D2.
Yes, sir.
$1,571,1652.
Yes, that one.
You're right, Spencer.
Yeah, probably.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
It's all moved.
Second. Nero. Motion made in second. On the question.
On the Item D on the purchase order on the majority, what, do we, do we know the difference when it says the majority of it is covered?
Is that our deductible?
I think there's a couple thousand dollars of it that is not covered. Is that correct, Brian?
A couple thousand dollars.
Is that our deductible?
Like a deductible or?
That is, just because of the appreciation of the air.
Thank you, Spencer. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Passes. Now, we're going to go back and address D2, which is K, purchase order, KH renovations for $24,805. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question.
I'll just add that the work is, for the remodeling that was described, but it's being funded through the DEA Fund, as far as the 100% of those improvements.
Oh, and they all have to go to benefit the Police Department?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
No, recuse.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on, unfinished business. Small cell antenna, antenna tower right-of-way sighting ordinance.
Sighting.
Sighting. Board to consider approving a small cell antenna tower right-of-way sighting ordinance. And I got Attorney Zemanek to give us some more information.
This item was first raised in November of 2017, and then the board postponed it so we could look a little further into some of the specifics of the regulations and fine-tune them, which we have now done. It's, it's back before you. This is a, as was described in November, a newer technology that we expect cell companies, through their individual contractors, to roll out, where they'll be putting these very small antennas on existing poles within public rights of way, or sometimes on private property. We have not, we've had companies inquire into the village and have scouted out locations. We've not had a formal permit application for a new antenna, but we expect one virtually any, any week now. The IML prepared a draft or a model ordinance to regulate these antennas, and that's what you have before you, subject to a few tweaks that we made as far as how many antennas can go, go on a certain pole or the height of certain poles, et cetera. I can go through the key points of the regulations, if you like, but they're pretty much the same from what was passed out in November.
I have a motion.
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second. On the question, Trustee Addington.
Just, again, a little more background. This came up down in Springfield. I think AT&amp;T was one of the big pushers for this, and all of the various councils of government, metropolitan mayors, DuPage mayors, suburban mayors, a lot of them got together on this one. And I think a joint packet that contains some 408 resolutions signed by various municipalities objecting to the state bill, which would have given us absolutely no power to control this at all. And it doesn't mean it's not going to come back at some point, but it took a lot of effort on our part, municipal league's part, to, to get to this stage. I think this is important. This goes back again to one of mayor and managers in the county. If you look at their initiatives and the other COGS, local control is still the issue here. Who makes these decisions? And the decision should be made by us. It's our streets. It's our, it's our poles. It's, it's, so, I very much am supportive of this and supportive of Ron or continuing to protect us with his veto and not let these things just be hung all over the place, because that's basically what they were, they were trying to get passed at the state level, with us having no say-so.
I agree. I heard, and that's what I was going to say, is I heard it was going to pass, and that they were going to have control at the state level, which, my question is, does that mean we have no control then, if they do that?
Correct. That, any state law would override this local ordinance, but we, since we don't know the fate of that state law.
This is good until then, at least.
This is good until then, and because of lobbying efforts and such as the resolution that this board passed in December, you know, maybe nothing will come of the state law.
Yeah, okay. Trustee Barker.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is probably for John, because it's been a while since we've talked about this, but like, we have an agreement with, Waste Management. Can we set up an exclusive agreement with a vendor, say AT&amp;T, and that would allow them, because that device, that antenna device would belong to somebody, it, it could be an AT&amp;T device, so that we don't have poles where we allow these things to go on, and then we have five companies come through here and put five different devices on that same pole?
So, what the ordinance that you have in front of you allows up to no more than two antennas on poles of 90 feet or less. So, that's, that's what you are prescribing. If it's 120 feet or less for an existing pole, there can be no more than three antennas on that pole. If someone wants to come in and propose a new pole, we, of course, encourage, and this ordinance encourages, antennas to be located on existing poles, and that's what the companies want to do, because they're cheaper. But if there's a gap in coverage and they can prove a necessity, they can put in a new pole, but this ordinance limits the height of that new pole to 40 feet.
Okay. But we can restrict several vendors from coming in. Why, it would be two devices or three devices. You could actually have more companies than that doing the exact same thing, AT&amp;T, Sprint, or whoever.
You could have 12 different companies putting up antennas throughout the village, and all we can do is limit the number permitted on any one pole. If they do...
Any one existing pole. They can install their own.
Right. They can install their own pole, if the village allows it, and if it's no more than 40 feet. They've got to prove a necessity.
But again, if the state approves something different, then we have to abide by the state.
Correct. The next step also, if someone does come in and apply for a permit, is that they will need a license agreement with the village to occupy the rights of, like, if it's a utility, we do franchise agreements. If it's a private company like Mobileite, who's inquiring right now, or any other private company, that they would need a license agreement. And the next step will be to get in front of you a master license agreement that would cover all these installations, so everyone doesn't have to come in front of you, and staff can administratively sign off on the license agreements.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Fire and Police Commissioner reappointment. Board to approve an ordinance reappointing Mr. Robert Cavanda as a commissioner and the chairman of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. This is my recommendation. He has served on it 17 years, and I think he does a...
Does a great job.
...great job, so I'm looking for a motion.
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Nero. Motion made second. Motion made second to approve. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. 409 North Grant Street, setback variance. Board to consider ordinance requesting a zoning code variance request to allow for construction of a new home within the required front yard setback to mitigate an existing heritage tree in the R3 single-family detached resident district. Director Sigler.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is to allow the newly proposed home to be located at a 25-foot setback rather than the 35 feet that's required by code. This would encroach 10 feet into the setback. This is in order to save a significant heritage tree with a 40-inch diameter in the rear of the property. For the public hearing that was two weeks ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed how the tree was classified, how it would be protected during construction, and the effect that the decreased front yard setback would have to the surrounding properties. In this instance, our staff actually requested that the, that the property owner take the tree into consideration and thoughtfully design around it if possible. If the homeowner were to, or if the property owner were to build further back on the lot, it would create a significant financial hardship. The tree itself on the lot is an incredibly unique circumstance that you don't run across every day, and the front yard setback will not be considerably different for the neighborhood. So several of the houses are actually already located at a 25-foot setback. Some of them look further back because they don't have a sidewalk that's yet constructed, but they're between 25 and 35 on that block. In addition, the saving the tree will not allow the builder to make more money off the property. In fact, he has put substantially more money into the property as a result of these discussions with us, and he did not create this hardship. Based on all these considerations, the commission made a positive recommendation, noting that the setback variance was nominal and justified due to the heritage tree considerations. The village forester and I recommend approval to support the significant heritage tree and request a waiver of the variance application fees by the board in order to minimize the financial impact to the applicant. It was noted at the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I'd also like to mention how great he has, he's been to work with. He doesn't like speaking in public, but Mr. Maguire has met with us repeatedly and has been, he's not excited about saving the tree, but he's definitely been willing to work around it, which has been really nice. We've had builders in the past who've ripped down construction fencing, driven over tree roots, denied liability after the fact, and Mr. Maguire has been nothing but cooperative and helpful, so.
Does our forester, John Yader, you have anything to add?
I don't believe I have anything to add at this time unless there's any questions on the tree itself. I guess my question is, is anybody not aware of this issue? I would assume Manager May has updated you all on, on the tree itself. If there is any further question.
If there's any other questions on it, I'd be happy to answer those. Good presentation at Planning and Zoning as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I liked how you, and we know it's a cry of apple, and it was good to see everybody working together to save this tree, so.
I agree.
I guess, what, what would restrict somebody down the road? Or is there no restriction down the road? If, if the new resident takes it and wants to get rid of it or something, is there something that would prevent them from doing that?
The heritage tree ordinance technically prevents that, but working with Attorney Zemanek, that kind of interferes a bit with private property rights. So we're trying to work that out right now and how to actually identify that potentially on the deed. Play a survey as well, or?
The, the heritage tree ordinance prevents someone from just cutting down a heritage tree, and I think there's a, there's a fine that they could be subject to, but that's going to, that's going to be it. What we've discussed at Planning and Zoning Commission is to work with the applicant. He's not obligated to do this, but perhaps we can craft language in the deed that's akin to a deed restriction that says this property contains a significant heritage tree. The tree, as long as it's surviving, cannot be removed without a permit issued by the village, just to put a future purchaser on notice who would follow the chain of title that this tree exists.
Great, thank you.
But if someone takes a chainsaw to it in the middle of the night, what do we do?
I guess it's.
Well, it's great to save it.
If, if somebody buys property and they don't realize it's a heritage tree and they cut it down?
Yeah, that's why you put something in the deed.
Okay.
As long as it's not an encumbrance on the developer's ability to sell the property, and that's what we don't want to do, is, you know, interfere with the property rights.
Just don't sell it to Mr. T. You'll be all right.
Well, do I have a motion?
It's actually funny that you say that because that's why, sorry.
Second, Guzzo.
Sorry.
Additional comments?
Highland Park or Lake Forest actually passed a heritage tree after that, or a heritage tree ordinance because of that, so it, it's much more restrictive than ours.
Interesting. Okay, the motion been made second to approve on additional question. Trustee Barker.
Yeah, Mayor, I would just like to compliment staff and the developer as well on the cooperation between the two. John gave us a brief summary last week at the Environmental Improvement Commission, and they were very supportive of the heritage tree ordinance, even though it complicated things here early on in our adoption of that particular ordinance, but they saw it as a very good thing. And then I did have some follow-up questions with Jill and John about, you know, protecting the tree is one, and then if a patio would go in there. And they followed up immediately with responses, so I appreciate staff's time in getting us the answers that we need, so that is all.
And you guys don't have to chain yourself to the tree. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business C. Burr Oak Drive Water Main Improvements. Board to consider ordinance authorizing engineering service agreement with Baxter and Woodman for Phase 1 and 2 design engineering service, services for the Burr Oak Water Main Replacement Project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. This project includes 1,200 linear feet of 8-inch PVC pipe along with six new fire hydrants to replace the old cast iron water main that's currently existing there. The water main will replace, will be replaced from Burr Oak from Chestnut to Plaza. One thing I want to point out is that since January 1st, we've already had three water main breaks on the street, and it's also the street we have the most water main breaks in town by far. Since 2001, I believe, we've had 38 main breaks on the street. I don't know why this pipe, because you all know the industrial park hasn't been around that long. I mean, it's 60s. And for some reason, this stretch of pipe continually breaks. And I don't, it just must have been just bad pipe when they installed it. But it's a nuisance up there. The industrial park businesses up there are constantly complaining about the roads being iced up, about, you know, constantly up there digging. So it's definitely something we have to take care of. So we kind of pushed this project up, kind of advanced it, kind of ahead of some other projects we wanted to do, but this is something that's really been a nuisance up there. Sidebar to that is that construction would not start until after July 4th, obviously, because of all the, you know, all the festivities we have up there, so it'd probably start late July, maybe early August. I was talking to the engineer today, and he's thinking maybe go out to bid mid-July and maybe not start until early, mid-August probably would be the best time, make sure we get done before school starts again in September. It's a short project, it's only 1,200 linear feet, it's not going to take very long to do. The biggest part of this project is just hooking up the, the businesses back up because they all have fire suppression now, so they're all 6-inch lines going across. That's going to be the biggest part of this project. The rest of it, the water main installation will take a week or two and will be done. We're not going to be disturbing the road when we're putting the water main, it's going to be in the parkway, so the road won't be damaged. We're talking about augering all the services so we don't dig up that new resurfaced road, so our goal is to preserve the road as best we possibly can.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second to approve on the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D. Nycor Franchise Agreement. Board to consider ordinance approving a franchise agreement with Nycor to construct, operate, and maintain a gas distribution system in the village. And I've got Manager May or Attorney Zemanek going to add to this.
I think I'll go on this one. Franchise agreement with Nycor, which is, I think, was a 50-year term, just expired, so Nycor reached out and asked the village to renew the franchise agreement. The agreement itself was part of your packet. I think the important provisions of the agreement are that they have to comply with all ordinances and regulations of the village, including our construction and the right-of-way ordinance, meaning they have to get permits for work they do, et cetera. If they cause damage to the right-of-way or pavement, et cetera, in the course of performing work, they have to repair and restore that damage to our satisfaction. Nycor has been a bit notorious for, for example, if there's permeable brick pavers that they cut into of just wanting to slap some asphalt on there. This at least sets a standard that it has to meet our, the repairs have to meet our standards. There's insurance and indemnification language that I think is acceptable, so, and it's a 30-year term, so I recommend approval.
And again, they have to get a permit before they start work.
Correct.
And in the past, sometimes they just show up.
And to the extent they use subcontractors who may not be aware of that permit requirement, we still may run into that. It might be a kind of training and repetition thing over a year or so, and hopefully they'll comply.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Additional comments, questions?
I have questions.
Trustee.
Two weeks ago, we heard how Julie messed up and we weren't aware, and it put a lot of additional funds into an issue, and one of it was, was it Nycor?
I believe it was utilities in general.
Okay, it was utilities. Is there some way we can write into this agreement that they give us a GIS or some kind of system where we know what their, where they are and, and where they're located? Because everybody's going to GIS. I can't imagine Nycor doesn't have something.
Great question. I tried to get several changes to this agreement, which were flat-out rejected. Reason is, there was several years ago, a consortium of municipalities that was put together who all contributed money and hired an attorney and through the power of bargaining, negotiated franchise agreements with Nycor. Westmont decided at the time not to be part of that consortium, and therefore, Nycor's position with respect to Westmont and any other community that didn't participate is, we're not going to give you what we gave those other communities, we're going to give you our standard kind of model franchise agreement, and that's it, no negotiations. So the only things they negotiated were the term, 30 years instead of 50, and that they would give us free natural gas for its own buildings. I can say for a fact that their system is on GIS.
They're, just through the Julie, the joint utility locating for, what's the I? Well, it's for excavators, isn't it? But you can go out there, and if you're going to dig in, you'll, they're obligated to go out and paint, not give you the depth, but then in a, in a design phase, there is a, I forgot what it's called, whether it's Office, Julie, or some sort of mechanism where you contact them ahead and then they, whether it's GIS or paper, they send you as-built information with the best information. So there is a mechanism to do that, but you have to rely on what they give you. And then kind of backing up to our last example that, that we used as an example, I would, did it cost us more money? It cost us more money than what we were planning to do when we thought it was somewhere else, but had we known it was in the place up front, the method of construction would have been the same, and that's what the cost would have been. So I wouldn't necessarily say it cost us more money, it just prevented us from not saving money, I guess, if that makes a difference to you, I, I don't know. But it's just a different way of looking at it. It just identified, we had to react and design it with the hole open, and that's how it would have been if the information was right in the first place.
Understood. My biggest concern was if they have GIS locations on everything that they've got. Can't they share?
And in this example, they, too, you know, we've got the advanced information that was wrong, so, depth-wise. We thought it was at a different elevation.
And we could surely request it.
Sure.
With disagreement, just say the board will request.
And I did not ask that specific question. If you're inclined, we can postpone this, which might make them a little nervous and say, here's something the village would like. Can you provide this information as a condition of the agreement?
The reason, the reason I brought that up before is that that's exactly what my son-in-law does for them, is the GIS and the mapping and the location. And he wasn't responsible for that anymore, but he wasn't aware of it. And, you know, the bottom line is, the, the answer is, because I asked him about it, they're only as good as their records. So whatever you put into GIS, and, you know, figure their network, you know, how big their network is, and the percentage, say they make a mistake on 3% of their total network, that's a lot, but it's a small amount of the total network, you know, so it's, it's only, they're only as good as their records, and is that available?
But if we think about it, that adds to
Yeah.
Our database of GIS mapping that we're already heading toward, and it can't hurt us to have that information.
Still might be incorrect in some instances, as I learned once in the
It's bound to be, but
Yeah.
At least you have a starting point.
Well, we have a motion, do I hear one to postpone, or just?
Motion to postpone.
Second, Nero.
Motion's been made and seconded to postpone. Any other comments?
I don't think there can be.
I vote on that one first.
Yeah, you vote on the motion to postpone first. That takes precedent.
I'd like a roll call, please.
On the postponement?
Yes.
On the postpone, so do we vote on the other one first?
No. The motion to postpone takes precedent over the first motion, and if that passes, then the first motion dies automatically. Right?
Okay.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Trustee Barry, do you have a question?
No, I was just glad that the unwritten rule, that it's one trustee for all trustees, and I'm glad to see that that came through tonight. Doesn't always come through for trustee Barry, so.
Well, did, did someone second?
Right, Jim?
Did someone second your motion before?
No, when, anytime a trustee has a concern like that and likes something postponed, we should all respect that and take a view at it. That doesn't always happen.
Most trustees.
I got your back, Carol.
All right. New business E. Elevator Standards Ordinance. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 18, Article 13 of the Village Code of Ordinances Regarding Elevator Standards, Inspections, and Fees. Chief Weiss.
Thanks, Mayor. The Allen High State Farm marshal currently prescribes standards, issues permits, performs inspections of elevators within the village. Village wishes to take over these tasks and wishes to utilize the services of a third-party elevator inspection company. This proposal ordinance establishes the standards and procedures for elevator construction, maintenance, and repair, and also establishes the permit fees for such matters. The third-party inspection fees are reimbursable from the owner. Let me ask that you approve this, and I'll have Director Kaufman come up now and talk a little bit about how we got here and how the process is going to work.[1717.11]